Okay, next we have the State Board of Education. At this rate, we will be out here by 12:00 midnight. So hopefully, I'll ask our members, keep your questions brief or make sure they're not repeated questions and the comments brief if we can. Thank you for your patience and thank you for joining us and the floor is yours.
Let me begin with the limitations with licensure. When an applicant seeks to be a substitute teacher, a teacher, or a paraprofessional, they must apply through ISB. The application has a question about convictions and asks for the applicant to detail their criminal history. If the applicant admits to a criminal history, the application goes through a rigorous investigation. If the applicant denies a criminal history, ISB has no way of knowing of a conviction record because ISB has no authority to run background checks. It might surprise you, but we've taken this up with the FBI in the past and the FBI has determined that ISB has no authority to run background checks. If a licensee then goes through a background check after they've been offered employment, after they've received a license and been offered employment in a school and then they notify us, either the school or a regional office of education notifies us very quickly that the licensee has inappropriate conduct on their background checked, we have the ability quickly to withdraw a license. But after too much time has passed, we have to go through a revocation or suspension process. And because we do not have the authority to suspend a license pending an investigation, that licensee has the ability to stay in the classroom until we can take action. I want to emphasize that that lack of authority to suspend licenses pending an investigation. It's something that is very problematic for ISB. We have, oftentimes, we have issues with licensees that we cannot take any action on until we move through the entire process of revocation before we remove their license. That means that even if they're fired from their school district, they have the ability to go to a different school district and apply for a job. And if something, if they haven't been convicted of a crime that shows up on their background check yet, then they continue with access to students. The second system we talk about is our educator misconduct system. In FY '18 through today, which we're not quite done with FY '18 yet, we have a few days left, but in FY '18, we have revoked or suspended the licenses of 66 teachers. We have 173 open misconduct cases, nine cases that are broken contract cases where the teacher breaks the contract in an inappropriate time, and another 95 cases that we are tracking. This does not include 163 cases that we learned about from CPS from another Tribune article where teachers were on a do not hire list and then were later hired at charter schools. We are still working to receive information about those 163 cases to find out if they're cases that need to be educator misconduct cases. We do not have enough information yet from CPS and we've been working for several, many, many months to get that. So there are two statutes that generally govern educator misconduct. That's Section 21b75 and Section 21b80 of the school code. Section 21b75 gives the state superintendent the exclusive authority to suspend for five years or revoke a license for abuse or neglect of a child, immorality, a condition of health detrimental to the welfare of pupils, incompetency, failure to disclose a sex offense on a license application, willful failure to report an instance of suspected child abuse, or neglect, failure to repay a school loan to an Illinois institution or other just cause. And 21b80 then establishes specific convictions that result in an automatic revocation of licenses. And these do include sex offenses, drug offenses, and murder. But they actually have to be, there's a specific list of offenses in the statute and there has to be a conviction of those specific offenses before it becomes an automatic revocation. So just a charge or an allegation of those specific offenses does not give us any right to move quickly. To identify these cases, our educator misconduct division relies on reports from school districts, the Division of Children and Family Services, regional superintendents, and community members. We also review statewide news outlets for articles or stories on misconduct. And when we discover a potential case, we request documents, we subpoena them if we need to, to determine if the misconduct case at hand rises to the level of a suspension or a revocation of a license. In the last year before the Tribune article, ISB has taken several steps affirmatively to identify cases and process them more quickly. We have also taken steps to increase our capacity to manage our large caseload to address educator misconduct issues. We've added a supervisor and an additional attorney to the educator misconduct department and we have expanded our relationship with an outside law firm who helps us process these cases and particularly take them to hearing. We sent letters to all school superintendents reminding them of their obligation to report suspected abuse to the Illinois State Board of Education. They often remember to report it to DCFS, but they forget us. And we sent the same letters to state's attorneys' offices imploring them to please provide us information regarding their criminal prosecutions and their investigations because that information can often lead to offenses that are never, or to licensure actions that are never reported to us. We have sought access across the state to criminal records and in many cases have had to fight hard to get access to criminal records through criminal courts. We finally, just recently, got access in Cook County after several years of not being able to get computer access and had to actually, on a regular basis, go to court and pull records ourselves to make sure that we had the information necessary to prosecute these cases. Once we get evidence to proceed with a case and we always, well, not, wouldn't say always, but we often give educators the opportunity to voluntarily surrender their license before due process ensues. But if they choose not to surrender their license, then ISB has the burden of proof by a preponderance of the evidence that an educator has committed an offense that should result in the loss of their licensure. Again, as I said before, we have no authority to suspend a license while we investigate or offer, you know, before we investigate or even offer due process to the licensee. And because these cases often come to us later than they come to a school district, DCFS, law enforcement, or state's attorneys, we have a lot of difficulty with evidence. We can collect documentary evidence, but we have a lot of difficulty with witnesses who, once they get to us, they're no longer interested in testifying. And so we often have difficulty meeting our burden of a preponderance of evidence of proving these educators should not be, should not be holding licenses. We take these cases to hearing anyway, but we have not been successful in several hearings because of lack of witnesses. It is ISB's priority to build technical assistance and supports to support children and families. Our value of whole child, whole school, whole community is at the core in all the work we do. We look forward to working with lawmakers to develop legislation that will make the changes necessary to ensure the healthy development of all of our children. Some ideas that we've considered and would like to suggest are changes to background checks to ensure that all parties get all the information necessary to make changes and to make employment decisions, including a possible background check database that schools and ISB can access. We'd like to talk about changes to the licensure system that would, at the very least, give ISB access to background checks before a license is issued to prevent people that have criminal convictions of serious, of serious issues from becoming a licensee in the first place. And we would like to talk about changes to the educator misconduct system to give ISB the ability to remove sexual abusers from the classroom pending an investigation and perhaps even places the burden on the accuser, or, I'm sorry, the educator to prove that they deserve to hold a license and not the burden on ISB to prove that they don't. On a very personal level, I'm disgusted that sexual abuse happens in schools. This is not an issue that's isolated to CPS. In my previous, in my previous life representing school districts, I worked with districts to investigate cases of rape, sexual assault, inappropriate relationships, and grooming. I've sat with superintendents and principals as they cried with parents, knowing that a child's innocence was forever lost. I've shared a school district's frustration at laws that make it very hard to remove teachers from the classroom. It is this, it is from this personal place that I come to you, before you today, to pledge ISB's commitment to creating a safe and healthy environment for each and every student in the state. ISB will continue to provide technical assistance and support, assistance and supportive schools in this regard. Amanda and Jeff and I are here to answer any of your questions and we hope to continue this dialogue long past this hearing so that we can continue to put systems in place, excuse me, to protect the students in our state.
Thank you for the testimony. Thank you for waiting this long to come before us. A couple of questions. In one of the articles, you referenced the standard for action. There's a case that apparently did not meet the standard for action. It's, and your quote, Mrs. Jones, was, "I know there seems to be a wide disparity between the number of reports and the number of sanctions," Jones said, "but there are cases that are sent to us that don't meet any standard for action."
Certainly. So the question that was posed to me by the Tribune is, there was a certain number of cases, and I can't remember the statistics off the top of my head, but there was a certain number of cases that CPS had told the Tribune, had been reported to ISB, and then there was a much smaller number of cases that we took action and removed licensure for. And so it's, there was a large disparity there. I couldn't answer for the Tribune at the time if, what that disparity was. So, you know, I wasn't sure that, A, we had actually received the reports of the cases, and I told that to the Tribune. I wasn't sure why the cases, the large number of cases were not acted upon. But I could say, but what I was able to say, what I can say definitively is, we receive lots of reports of misconduct from all school districts. We receive copies of every tenured teacher dismissal hearing. We receive copies of all sorts of different misconduct cases from a teacher that is absent, you know, too many times and gets fired, to a teacher that, that there's a sexual abuse allegation. The sexual abuse allegation would automatically be an open case that would go into our highest tract and be prioritized. But a case of too many absences where a teacher is dismissed wouldn't meet our standard. That's not something that we would remove, that we would take licensure action on necessarily. I mean, if there were perhaps several school districts that reported this about an educator, that would be different. And so that was the standard of action. The Tribune could not delineate for me, out of the number of cases that they were reporting, how many of those were sexual abuse cases or what those were. They were just delineating that there was a bulk number of cases that CPS claimed that they reported to ISB and a number of cases that we pursued. So that's where I could only say that, you know, that oftentimes, cases don't reach our standard of action.
However, if it's a sexual abuse case, it would meet that standard?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, okay, I understand the standard now.
Yeah.
So let me ask you, of all 852 school districts in the state, how many complaints or allegations do you get from the school districts that have to do with sexual abuse?
Off the top of my head, I don't know that answer, but we can have educator misconduct pull that and provide that to you. That's data that we can pull. You know, I know we received one this week from a Southern Illinois school district.
School District 300?
No, it wasn't from 300. From a school district in Southern Illinois, we received one this week. So, you know, they're prevalent, but I can't quantify that off the top of my head.
Can you leave, share with us, do you get a lot? And I know it's a relative term, what a lot means.
I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn around because my educator misconduct attorneys are in the room and see if they can, they were in the room. Oh, right there. How would you quantify what we get in terms of sexual abuse? A lot?
I mean, that's the vast majority of cases that we act upon. And that includes--
Yeah, you're going to have to--
If you can come to the mic and just introduce yourself for the record.
This is, this is Angela Brancato. She is one of our educator misconduct attorneys and she has been in educator misconduct the longest in the department, so.
Good afternoon. So the vast majority of cases that we deal with, we always prioritize the sexual abuse cases, the grooming, the excessive social media contact, anything that where there's excessive interest in a student that's outside of the student-teacher relationship. So those are going to be the vast majority of cases that we look at, the ones that we prioritize to move the most quickly on. When you're asking me an exact number of how many we get, when we get them, we always act on them. And Ms. Jones gave you the number of cases that we have open right now.
You said cases that are open right now?
Yes.
You have a number?
In my opening statement, I noted that there are--
173?
173 open cases. Nine of those are broken, or there are nine broken contacted, contract cases, and then another 95 cases that we're tracking. So there's 173 open misconduct cases and I can get you the breakdown of what, what type of, what those types of cases are.
You say misconduct.
Yes.
Are you talking specifically about sexual abuse?
No.
Okay. So some of these might not meet the standard of, that we talked about earlier.
Right.
In terms of sexual abuse, they're part of this universe. You just don't know how many right now.
Not, not right now, but we can get those numbers for you.
And you can break it down by school district?
Um, I'm sure--
Are you allowed to do that?
I'm sure we can. I mean, it might take some time. That would probably take some time, but--
Okay.
May I respond?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we put them in tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three. Tier one are the most serious cases and generally, those are the sex cases. There's no sex cases that are tier two or tier three. So right now, the open, we have 40 open cases that are called tier one. The 21b80 statute that Ms. Jones cited earlier are the ones that, they're enumerated offenses, which are often sex offenses, and we're, those are pending prosecution. So we have 36 of those that are open. As soon as those convictions come through, we request the conviction records and then we process the revocation documents and those licenses are revoked.
So you have 40 in tier one, correct?
Yes, sir.
And not all, but most of them are sexual abuse cases?
That would be my guess, yes.
Yeah. And you said 36 are open out of the 40? Or that's a separate?
36 are a separate category--
Okay.
--under the separate statute for the enumerated offenses for which licenses are automatically revoked upon conviction.
Okay.
So I would note that not every sex offense falls within the category of automatic revocation of a license. Not, it's, I mean, I call them the sex, drugs, and murder crimes, but, but there are several enumerated sex offenses in the code that don't fall within the 21b80 offenses. And I would also say there are several drug offenses that don't fall within those 21b80 offenses. So in our tiering system, we have a tier for the most severe issues that are not 21b80 that we don't automatically revoke, and then we have a tier for just the 21b80 criminal convictions, so.
So there could be sexual abuse cases that are part of tier two?
Yes. Well, part of tier one.
They're all, okay, they're all--
So there's tier one, tier two, tier three, and then there's the 21b80 offenses.
Gotcha, okay.
If I could clarify, the 21b80s are that part of the statute, the enumerated offenses. The tier ones are under 21b75, that other statute that we work with. So they might have indicated findings by DCFS for sexual offenses, but they're not, for whatever reason, being criminally charged.
Out of the 40 in tier one, do you have a breakdown in terms of school districts?
I could get that information.
Okay. Thank you. The, so let me ask you this. So you read, obviously, the Tribune article?
Yes.
Do you feel it's normal for a school district to experience not only like the type of abuse, but the lack of oversight, the lack of following the law, the mandated reporter law?
Normal, no. Concerning, yes.
Okay.
More than concerning, but I can't come up with a better word at the moment, so.
So we spent a lot of time early this year on the special education issue with CPS.
Yes, we did.
And I appreciate your effort and your work and working on that public inquiry. And I think the recommendation made by ISB was the appropriate one. We might disagree on the number of people and hours needed to do that, but I think it was the right step. And we had a public inquiry. And I know the public inquiry was driven by, I think, a federal requirement that authorized you to do that.
Yes, sir.
Help me understand and reconcile. You know, as I look at this scandal with sexual abuse, the special education thing was awful. We got, we have heard testimony from parents and it's just, this is really shameful that we had to go through that. I think moving forward, it's nice to know that there will be a monitor that will pretty much be responsible for special education for CPS.
Yes, sir.
That's a good place to be.
And I should say, this is a separate subject, but we have made an offer and received acceptance from a monitor. We'll be announcing that person next week.
Yeah.
So they will start on time on July 2nd.
And I think it's our intent to have a subject matter here and to bring this person before us, kind of walk us through the process and what--
Yes, sir.
--the plan is moving forward. But wouldn't the, the issue of sexual abuse somehow meet or exceed that standard that would require a public inquiry? Because I think, all we know is just basically what's been reported by the Tribune, and it seems like they had a difficult time just getting the information that they needed to put this out there. I think it's just the tip of the iceberg. I think we had a lot of young ladies and young men that perhaps did not follow through because of these multiple interrogations. At some point, say, I'm done, I'm not going to continue doing this. It was just something that ISB would consider looking a little bit deeper into to see if it's necessary to appoint a monitor or someone else to look into this.
I think we've been in contact with CPS to discuss the allegations, their investigation, engage what our response needs to be, and to determine whether an inquiry is the appropriate approach, whether technical assistance and support are the appropriate approach, whether we need to look at additional compliance requirements. And so we're still, we're internally doing an inquiry, so to speak, to determine what our next steps need to be, but certainly the public inquiry process is on the table. But aside from that, with all of the things that have risen, you know, it from, in my time at CP, or at ISB, which those of you who have seen me at the CPS hearings knows, is relatively short. It's, this is my, I think, eighth month. But in my eight months, we've seen a lot of things come out of CPS that are concerning to ISB. And so we are, in our responsibility as the regional office of education for the state board, which is a responsibility we've had for a long time, but had, you know, we lost funding for it in, I think, 2004. We are building out the regional office of education through ISB. So we are in the process of hiring three positions. One who will effectively be the regional superintendent for CPS, one that will support that regional superintendent on the education and student side, and one that will be able to support the regional superintendent in facilities and operations. And that infrastructure and structure would be responsible then for ensuring that we're doing additional compliance visits, that ensuring that they're implementing their policies, providing technical assistance and support when these things happen, and then also notifying the agency when there are things that are concerning. So we would expect these people to be present at CPS and in schools and be able to notify us of these things that are going on. So it would be a natural construct to continuously do, to, I guess, continuously do an inquiry on subjects like the sexual abuse or other concerning subjects that are coming out of CPS. So we are definitely committing resources to making sure that, that there's more compliance and a better eye on CPS than there has been in the past.
I'm glad to hear that the public inquiry option is still on the table.
Certainly.
I think they worked out very well before. We learned a lot of things that we were not aware of because of the three meetings that you had. I would strongly suggest that ISB considers that. It troubles me a little bit that it took so long for, obviously, the mayor of Chicago to respond to the special education issues. And I think we had discussions about ISB perhaps should have been a little bit more prompt in responding and looking into it. As we look at this issue, the question also arises, where was ISB? You probably hear from some of the members here, where was ISB in all this? And realizing that for something this large, something had to be on the radar screen. ISB had to know there's something going on. For example, let me ask you, do you work closely with DCFS?
We have a, yes, and they're a sister agency. We have a relationship with them. We have had uneven, I would say, an uneven response from them in reporting information to ISB about abuse and neglect cases that they have knowledge of. So we have, it is, it is dependent on who is the general counsel at DCFS. We are currently in a spot where DCFS is reporting to us well, but we went through a long period where we were not able to get information from DCFS because their general counsel was not allowing that information to come over on a regular basis, so.
And they, they didn't do that, why? Were they basing that on some interpretation of statute that they didn't have to?
I believe so. That they couldn't share the information with us.
Okay. How does ISB feel about the failure to report these incidents to DCFS as required by law?
It's incredibly serious and it's bothersome to us. I will say that it's probably the, it's one of the least things that are reported to us. So it's very seldom that a school district will report to us, or even DCFS will report to us, that there has been an instance where an educator failed to report to DCFS. So we do have the ability to remove a license if there's a willful failure to report, but we have to know that there was a failure to report to begin with to even be able to investigate that. So, and if we can't get the information out of our school districts or our, for DCFS or law enforcement, it's very difficult for us to move forward. That's one of the reasons, the lack of information coming to us, is one of the reasons that we took the step this year to send a letter to all superintendents and to all state's attorneys to, well, with superintendents, remind them of their obligation to report to us, and state's attorneys to implore them to please provide us with information. Because while they're prosecuting, if we don't know what's going on with either a prosecution or within their communities, it's very difficult for us to act.
My last question. So in the event that ISB determines or finds out that there's a, an employee for any school district that fails to report, what powers or authority do you have to reprimand or do something by that employee?
Well, we don't, our only power is with respect to their license. So we don't have any, any power of authority with respect to hiring or staffing, so we cannot--
But if you find out that they failed to report--
If, if we find out--
Is that enough to take away the license?
If it, if the failure to report is willful, so we have to make a determination that they failed to, they knowingly failed to report. So, you know, that they knew it was abuse, that they failed to report, or that in some way, they chose not to report. And let me say this, the reporting aspect for teachers is sometimes, it should seem very simple that they know that they should report, but sometimes they don't know what case is, like what, what rises to the level of abuse or neglect. I had, I had a case when I was in private practice where a teacher forcibly fed barbecue sauce to a young child. Weird case. I got the phone call like three days after it happened and my first response was, did you call DCFS? Well, that doesn't seem like abuse to us. Well, that's not, I always told districts that that's not their call. It's better to call DCFS than not. We've talked, I heard some discussion about grooming cases. Grooming cases oftentimes happen to students when they're 16, 17 years old and they're getting ready to graduate high school. And in my experience, educators that are groomers will wait until the student turns 18 in order to make actual overtures towards the student for, you know, make sexual advances. DCFS often won't take those cases. So you called to report an 18-year-old and DCFS won't take the report. So then a teacher or an educator that doesn't understand why DCFS isn't taking that report, then will question the next time that they do see an abuse case and why they should report. So a lot of those times, it's not willful, it's just confusion about what they should do. If they choose not to report because they don't want to get a fellow educator in trouble or things like that, we would move swiftly on that as long as we knew it was happening.
My final question. The incident at school district 300?
Yes.
Was this formally brought to your attention?
Do--
I'm not sure--
We would have to look it up. We'll have to let you know. I saw, I read about it in the newspaper, so I was aware of it, but I don't know if it's made it to our educator misconduct division yet.
Okay, and we can probably talk about, I'm just trying to understand the communication and how this process works. It was reported in the Tribune on June 12th.
Yes.
That there's a--
And we do watch--
The school has been sued and the principal as well.
Yes. And we do watch for news reports the best that we can. We have Google Alerts and--
Yeah, but still, we'll talk more about the process.
Certainly.
It seems like there's got to be more of a streamlined process here to let you know.
I would love a more streamlined process.
Okay. Senator Bertino.
Thank you for being here. A few questions regarding some of your testimony. I'll start with just what you were talking about, removing teachers. And we mentioned a teacher report, or their failure to report and the investigation process. So if a teacher, whether it's sexual abuse or any type of abuse, where I understand they sometimes don't know, if they reported to their principal, there's some action, they reported to their principal technically by law, that teacher is violating the law for not calling DCFS, correct?
Yes. The teacher should still call DCFS.
So even if CPS did follow through with that action and they, with the story that they're sharing from, from the newspaper, if CPS did follow through and, and report this, this teacher who took the child to the principal instead of, instead of calling DCFS, would that teacher still be investigated? That's where you come in, whether or not determining if it's a willful action.
Yeah. So that would be where, you know, if, if the principal said, okay, I'm going to take it from here, I have a hard time, and you'd have to know the specific circumstances. But if the principal says, I'm going to take it from here, it's hard for me to know that it was willful. On the flip side, every individual educator is a mandated reporter and we've always tried to implore that upon educators, that regardless of what's going to happen, you have an obligation. So when I do talk to educators about this, I recommend when that principal says, we'll take it from here, that they stay with the principal-- that principal says, we'll take it from here, that they stay with the principal and make the call together. Then, they can both make sure that they're fulfilling their mandated reporter duties.
And I think that has to come to, and maybe it has to start, it does have to start at the school district level here, is reinforcing it. Because, again, I, I'm sure there is a lot of confusion. A lot of people just go to their seniority when they're dealing with any type of cases and thinking that they, that they have fulfilled their obligation. So, again, maybe that is something we need to reinforce the fact that, no, you are responsible. Just going to a supervisor isn't good enough. You talked also about cannot suspend pending investigation. And I'm curious, you know, are these state laws that are inhibiting this or federal laws?
They'd be state law. So, we only have the authority to revoke or suspend after due process. So, our revocation or suspension, our due process, process between investigation and a hearing, and a hearing decision can take some time. And so, although during all of that time, the educator still holds a license and could still technically be in a classroom if they're able to be, find employment. So, it's that period of time that we're concerned about, and we have no affirmative ability through the statute. Our limitation is on, we can suspend for five years or revoke for eternity after due process.
Are you suggesting that we do have something in place, so when investigations are occurring, that it's somehow noted in the system?
Yes, ma'am. So, at least, at least with the, the most egregious offenses, and I would say any of the sexual offenses would, would fall into the most egregious offenses, we would like the ability to suspend a license pending an investigation and, and due process hearing.
Regarding these open cases, you mentioned 40 Tier One cases that were open. Do you know how long have they been open since?
I don't, but we can get that information for you.
And we talking, could you, like, a year? Are we talking like five years, or?
I don't think there's any that's, that are five years old. We moved through the Tier One cases pretty quickly. Some of the lesser offense cases have probably been around for a while, but we can get that information for you, or if Angie knows.
There should not be any that are more than a couple of years old. Some of them are working their way through the court system under charges that do not fall under the statute that I mentioned earlier.
Yeah. Can you, and that was going to be my next question. You talked about 21.8b80?
Twenty-one, twenty-one b80.
All right. What, what would be some sex offenses that don't require a revocation of a certificate or license?
Every sex offense that I'm aware of, I think Claudia might have found another one, one of my colleagues, we were, we continually looked through the criminal code to see, is there anything missing that we'd like to see added? And in fact, one was added within my tenure with ISB, unauthorized videotaping. So, that's in there now, but it's of a minor. I can't think of any sex offenses that are not in 21b80.
I think the issue is pleading, maybe perhaps pleading down, and I may have misspoken when I said that there were some that were not included.
Pardon me. We did want to point out that sometimes the prosecutors will lower the sex offense. It's originally a sex charge, and they plead out to like a battery, or something like that, that doesn't fall under 21b80. And that puts it back into that number of 40 cases with the 21b75, that we have to wait out the prosecution, and then they're, they're entitled to a hearing.
Can you, if you conduct your full hearing, because, even if they plead out to a lesser case, and it's no longer, maybe something that would be revocable, can you take the situ, can you go back and look at the history in order to revoke a certificate? Or do you have to just go by the charges?
We put together a full case. It's similar to a trial, but it's, you know, an administrative hearing. And so, we, we get police reports, we get witnesses, and all those, you know, if there's DCFS reports, any school district investigations, all that material is brought together, and the educators offer a hearing. They may, again, voluntarily surrender the license, or they are entitled to a hearing.
Just to follow up on that, it's a, it's a, it's a full process, and oftentimes, we don't have all of the evidence available to us until after a conviction. So, whether we can provide for that prior to a conviction and go through a hearing before someone goes through the criminal processes, it's very difficult. It makes it very difficult for us to pursue, pursue things that haven't gone through the criminal process.
And my last questions are regarding background checks, fingerprint testing. And again, from my experience, it's been really difficult in regards to sharing information with other, other school districts. So, can you explain why ISB can't have a statewide database of fingerprints? What's your limitations with that?
Well, ISB doesn't have any authority to do background checks at all. So, we have various vendors that can do background checks, but for us to do background checks and create a database, we would have to rely on other entities that do background checks to provide them to us. And that is limited by their ability to actually provide background checks. So, for example, a regional office of education that is a background check vendor can do a background check, but they can't then share with another regional office of education the complete results of the background check. All they can share is a statement that the background check was completed and was clean. So, they can't share the information out, which limits and, you know, inhibits us from them collecting that information and putting it in a database. We would need legal changes to allow us to collect that information. But I can say that we've had discussions within our licensure division, and we have a, the system, the educator licensure system, that is capable of holding background checks. So, if we had the opportunity to create it, we could upload background checks through the Ellis system, and also then work through that system to make sure that people that don't need access to every educator's background check can't have access. So, we could do it. So, you know, that information is there for the people that need to have it, but not everybody in the state.
And vendors aside, because I understand that different vendors will do fingerprinting. My understanding has always been that the sharing of information is limited because of, of the FBI.
Yes.
And so, again, even if we create a state law that says ISB can conduct background checks and keep a database, will we be violating a federal law or something greater?
We'll have to, we'll have to look into that. I think there are some state changes that we could make, and then we'll have to approach the FBI. But I know that, I believe that other states do get some ability to do background checks at the licensee level, and I'm not sure why the FBI has not been willing to do that for, for ISB. That, that happened before I was here, and it's something that we need to pursue. And just one other thing about background checks, if I may, the, the way background checks are done in school districts is also really uneven. And depending on the vendor that a school district uses, a fingerprint background check is not going to be enough. So, a fingerprint background check will not give certain sex offenses or murder offenses. So, a school district actually has to take an affirmative step to check the, the sex offender registry, and to check a murder database that the FBI puts out there, to check all of the offenses that could prohibit an educator from being in the classroom. So, it's interesting to me that, that we talk about robust background checks, but it's really uneven depending on the vendor that a school district, a school district uses.
And is there any mandate currently that requires a school district to take those extra steps to look on the?
Yeah, their mandate, if their, if their vendor doesn't provide the information, they have to get the information.
If they don't, right.
And most, I think they do, the ones, they're required to do it. But then, you know, the fingerprint background checks update. So, they, if something happens, they get updates. But whether or not school districts have the capacity then to check the sex offender registry, and to check the, you know, the murder list is a secondary question. And it's unlikely, I think, that after employees are hired, that they're checking on a regular basis.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
A couple of questions, Ms. Jones. So, the mandated reporter?
Yes.
The person who learns that, either by observation, hearsay, whatever have you, they're mandated by law to report, call the hotline?
Yes.
Okay. I'm looking at the, the manual for mandated reporters dated May 2015, revised edition, put out by DCFS.
Okay.
And, and bold, it states that ideally, the mandated reporter with the most direct knowledge of the suspected abuse should be the one to make the call, right?
Yes.
However, this is not a requirement.
Oh. I wasn't aware that DCFS took that position.
But is, is it legally correct?
I, I think if you read the law, it, it requires the reporter with the most knowledge to make the report. But I am, I am not the agency that interprets the mandated reporter law, and so...
They'll be coming after you. We can ask them. When there are complaints about any school district, let's say in this case, Chicago, since you serve, not you, ISB serves as the ROE, kind of, do you have compliance officers that go out there and visit the schools?
We, it depends on the, yes. Yes, there are people that can go out and visit the schools.
So, how many compliance officers do you have?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't classify them as compliance officers. But there are, certainly, we have, we have staff that can go out and inspect things, or, or, you know, investigate complaints or concerns. Certainly with the ROE construct, we'll have three people that it will be their primary duty, but we have people that...
But moving forward, you have something, but currently today, do you have the capacity? Do you have the resources to, to, for a school district that's, that's that large?
The size of CPS?
Yeah.
I'm going to turn to Jeff, because that would actually fall more within his department than mine.
Hi. Jeff Aronofsky, Executive Director for Safe and Healthy Climate at ISB. Currently, no. We don't have capacity to be out in a compliance role as a traditional regional superintendent would. And I'll ask Stephanie to correct me, but, you know, we absolutely have monitors for, you know, special education. We have folks that follow up for English learners, specific, early childhood, specific grant programs. But in terms of looking at the school code in general, you know, that's why we moved to trying to establish an ROE office within ISB, because of our, our current limitations.
Jeff, you mentioned special education. Do you have someone to monitor that? But obviously, there are things occurring that ISB didn't pick up, although you are in your role of the slash ROE, you did mention special ed. And obviously, we had a huge problem with special ed. So, that tells me that you don't have the resources to, to fully investigate, unless CPS was not cooperating with your monitor. Which one was it?
I, I can't speak to special ed. I mean, I, the reason I mention special education is I know we have an entire division, you know, devoted to that particular topic. So, I...
I think it, so we have, we have several divisions that, that, that do do monitoring. So, we have special education that do monitoring, and we were engaged, and we used a monitoring instrument that was approved by the department, the Federal Department of Education in special education, that looked at, at certain specific areas. And we were very involved in certain schools that are part of what we call focus monitoring, that, that we were helping, providing technical assistance in the areas that the Department of Education required us to do. We also have a division called Federal and State Monitoring, that is a division that goes out and, and monitors grants that, on the federal and state level. And we actually just increased our capacity for federal and state monitoring at CPS by hiring a contractor to help assist us in that monitoring activity. We have English language, we have our EL department that would monitor the, any of the federal and state English language learner grants. And so, all of those kinds of monitoring does happen. Whether we're monitoring, whether or not they're complying with policies that we're talking about today, our capacity is limited to do that. And that's why we're trying to expand our capacity with the ROE roles.
Okay. So, let me ask you CPS specifically. When you work with CPS, are they pretty forthcoming? If you ask for information from CPS on special ed, on, on sexual abuse, do they cooperate fully with the State Board of Education, with your slash monitors?
I think the answer is sometimes. And I can't give you specific examples, but like any school district, I think it's a, I think there's an ebb and flow of information. And CPS is certainly a larger school district, so we have to sometimes repeatedly ask for things. But I can't give you specific examples of where we haven't gotten information.
And I'll just say this, and I've said this before, that getting information from CPS is like pulling teeth. And they fight back. And I know that there have been oftentimes from the State Board of Education, ISB requesting information. That's my concern as well, that if they appoint the Inspector General to do the investigations, that notwithstanding the fact that this person is appointed by the mayor, that Chicago has a history of fighting back. So, the Inspector General might be an independent body, but it's been my experience, based on what I've seen, that Chicago, and I'm not talking about CPS, I'm talking about Chicago, they'll, they'll fight back. So, it's, on paper, it might look like, sound like a great idea. I'm just concerned that it's not going to go far enough. With that, we do have members who want to ask questions. Representative Reich for one of multiple questions, I guess.
Nope. One of one.
All right.
Stephanie?
Yes, sir.
21b75, you say willful failure to report is as an offense.
Yes, sir.
Negligent failure to report is not. Is that correct?
No, it is not.
Would you recommend that that be added to the list of those types of offenses?
I think that would be a good add.
Thanks. That's it.
Well, you made it up really well. Rose of Flowers, you saw that? It was really short. Your turn.
I need clarity, Ms. Jones, on something. According to the school code, are you, do you have any authority to investigate any type of educational discipline in regards to CPS?
If it, if it rises to the level of a licensure action, yes. But if it's other staffing decisions, and it's not reported to ISB, then, then, no, we don't have any, we have no authority to investigate or force any sort of staffing action with a school district.
I didn't say staffing.
Okay.
Okay. According to my information, in regards to the school code, the school code does not provide a concrete timeline for the State Board of Education to discipline disgraced educators. There's no timeline, but there's nothing prohibiting you from doing so. And for suspensions and revocations on a license, or the current statute says ILCS 5/2, 21b-75, provide that the State Superintendent of Education has the exclusive authority to initiate a suspension of up to five calendar years, or the replication of any license issued for abuse of a child, immorality, unprofessional conduct.
So, yes, we have the ability to take licensure action.
Yes.
But we do not have the ability to, to issue other discipline. So, we do have the ability to take licensure action, and we do do that.
Okay, I was, that's...
Okay.
We were not talking about any other action, but according to, according to this information that I have, you do have authority to take discipline action against the educator, but there's no timeline for it.
Yeah, there is, there's no timeline for our licensure action. You're correct.
I'm not talking about the licensure action, because the licensure action says it could go up to five calendar years. I'm talking about the discipline, the discipline.
And, and it is my understanding of the school code that we do not have the authority to discipline a teacher for any conduct other than taking licensure action. So, I'm happy to look at, if you have a citation, we're happy to look at a citation, but I'm not sure where in the school code we have that authority.
Well...
I'd be happy to, to exercise that authority if it was given to us.
The State Board of Education and the length of time for its discipline, and according to my information, it can take years, years, for you to discipline, because there is no timeline. So, I would suggest that you do look into that.
Okay.
And I would like to know, what is your, what is your standard of actions? What do you mean, your standard of actions? Actions for what?
So, when I was talking about standard of action in the, in the Tribune article, there, you listed some of the enumerated offenses in 21b75 that allows us to, to, to take action towards an educator's licensure. But in the list of, in the list of, or I'm sorry, in the grouping of misconduct issues that the Tribune had, the number of misconduct issues, they couldn't tell me what the misconduct was. They just had a broad number. And so, when I was talking about our standard of action, we take action on the cases that are in 21b75. If it's a case that is not in 21b75, or it doesn't meet, we don't have, we aren't able to prove beyond, or based on a preponderance of evidence, that the educator should lose their license, then we don't always take action on those. But...
But, but I think you're missing the point, because, again... But I think you're missing the point, because again, according to 105, 521B-75, you are to, the state board, I'm sorry, the state superintendent has up to five years to revoke the license issued for abuse of a child.
Well, we can, we can suspend, it says that we can suspend up, for up to five years, or we can revoke. So we don't have a time period for how long, how quickly we have to act, but we...
Well, that's my point, that's what I just told you.
Right, but we act quickly.
You can discipline, and you don't have a time limit, that's part of the problem.
Right, but our discipline...
You need to set a time limit, we need to set a time limit for you. We don't expect for you to do it. We need to set a time limit, because it's not of the urgency for you, and that's the reason why it hasn't been done. Now, you've only been there for eight months, but this has been going on for a very long time. And so the fact of the matter is, there is no time limit, but there is a time limit as to how long that person's license can be suspended, and it is up to five years.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Now, tell me about your standards, again, because I was not aware that there were standards other than what we're talking about here today.
Our standards are in the statute. So what we're talking about in 21B-80 is the basis of what we can remove a license for.
And what we're here today for is child abuse?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And child abuse, and there's different standards in regards to DCFS. DC, it is required, it is, DCFS is, it's mandate that we report to DCFS if a child is sexually abused.
Yes.
That's it. That's, because how DCFS define child abuse is just not by sexual contact. If there's something that's going on in the family, there is a difference between the type of allegations that DCFS experience and go out and investigate.
Yes.
But they do not go out and investigate necessarily the child, the abuse that's in the school, because they don't, it's just a different section of the law, between being abused at home, beaten, raped, and all other sorts of things, or coming in contact with a sexual predator in the school. But because that child is in the school environment, and the teachers there are mandated reporters, they have to report to DCFS.
Yes.
But it's not incumbent upon DCFS to do the investigation. DCFS and anyone else, if this child is not abused, one would think that the police would be called to do the investigation. That's, that is what one would think, according to the court case that was done in regards to the distinction between DCFS abuse and the sexual contact with a teacher in the school. My, my next question, I'm having a rice moment here. So you came from an environment where you dealt with rape in the school?
Certainly, ma'am. I had, I had several cases in representing a school district where educators were, either educators or community members were accused of rape in schools.
And so when you came to the state, did you bring any new ideas, or did you suggest anything new, or as a result of the Tribune articles and your experience, do you see any way that we can improve on our current statutes?
Yeah, I think, as I said in my opening statement, I think looking critically at our, at our background check laws and talking about how to make sure that everybody has the information that is necessary to make good hiring decisions is very important. And there's some obstacles to that, but that's something I think we need to talk about.
Well, let's talk about those obstacles, because maybe about 10 or 15 years ago, maybe longer, I can't remember, we did the patient's right to know about doctors, because there was a time when we would have to go from county to county and state to state to find out about the doctor's background.
Yes.
And so now, of course, Illinois is one of the states that all doctors' profiles are online.
Yes.
And so, and the Department of Professional Regulations do the background. So would you suggest, if you can't do it, that we give the Department of Professional Regulations? Since they're the ones that license the other profession, and teachers are a profession, do you think that's where we should go?
I think it would be, I would prefer that we find a way for ISB to be able to do it, if we're talking about an agency to be able to do it.
I agree, so I think probably what needs to happen is that we need to change the law and let you have that authority in your hands. So I'm sure if anyone is saying that you can't do it, maybe because it's not in law yet.
Yes.
But we are lawmakers, and had we known that, we would have changed it, and since we do know it, we will change it.
We would appreciate that.
And I think, I think we should also have a statewide database, the same as we have with doctors, so...
One thing I would say to that, and it's another thing that, that as legislators you could address, the Personnel Records Review Act limits, for personnel in general, it limits disciplinary information in a teacher's personnel file for only up to four years. So if four years later, somebody requests information about a teacher, a school district cannot disclose it.
And the same principle happened with the patient's right to know about doctors, it was limited to five, but then we changed the law.
Right, and that's...
And made it 10. And so we could do the same thing here.
Yes, that's what I would suggest, that we look at that time period.
That's a good suggestion, and I guarantee you, Senator Collins is writing it down right now.
Thank you. Thank you. Representative Willis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a very brief question. I know colleges and universities have to report annually sex crimes that happen. Do we have any similar things for K through 12 schools?
So we have a requirement in the school code that superintendents report sexual, any abuse allegation to the State Board of Education. But I think, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, it happens haphazardly, and so we have reminded them of that obligation. We are also under the same Department of Education guidance regarding sexual abuse and sexual assault at schools. So schools should be reporting that information to the Department of Education, through the Department of Education's guidance, although I do believe that they rolled some of that back since the new administration took over, and I don't know what they're doing with that reporting anymore.
So there's not a annual public report that's put out that states there are X amount of cases in this school, this school district or that school district?
No.
Similar to what we have in colleges and universities?
No.
Because each individual college and university must put out an annual report that is distributed to their community, correct?
Yes, there's no, there's no similar requirement for kid at 12.
Perhaps if we did that, we wouldn't have to wait for the Chicago Tribune to unearth these problems.
Very true.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Senator Rosen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amanda, you spoke before, a group of superintendents I had several months ago, and you talked about all of the different mandated reports that you have to accumulate and disseminate from data, from legislation we passed. I'm just curious about, how many reports would that be?
I don't have the specific number, but there are a number of...
Yes, 10, 20, 50?
She has the list. It looks like it's several pages long.
So it's fair to say that, you know, you have been asked via legislation to accumulate this data and these reports that are mandated by the state to ISB, but it seems to me, where did we miss out in terms of this mandated reporting from the school districts about sexual, you know, sexual crimes to ISB?
We do not have that report.
Okay. So that is not mandated currently?
Right.
That report, okay. Also, you spoke about, Stephanie, you spoke about the timeframe from when a teacher fills out an application, I'm assuming, and the potential hire, and the, I guess, the movement of the information to you in terms of issuing a license. What's the timeframe to pull a license before you have to go through the entire revocation process? So it sounded like there's a very small window there.
Our standard is 60 days. And we notify, we notify licensees that, that if we receive background check information with them, from them, within 60 days, that demonstrates that they have a criminal conviction that would prohibit them from holding a license, that we will automatically pull the license. But beyond that, we believe that due process then would attach, we don't feel like we can let it go beyond those 60 days without giving due process, because in all likelihood, someone is in a school and teaching by that time.
Do you feel that you're receiving all of the information you need within 60 days to make that decision?
No, no, certainly not.
Okay.
Certainly not. And it can happen, I mean, it can happen more often than you think, where a teacher receives their teaching license and doesn't get a job, maybe not now with the teacher shortage, but previously wouldn't get a job for another year. And so they would have that license, but not go through a background check, because we don't trigger background checks until somebody actually is employed. So that, that can be, that can be an issue.
So that's problematic, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Because by that point, now you have to go through the long process of licensure revocation, is what you're saying?
Yes. And, and without the ability to be able to suspend a license while we go through that process. So if it's a very serious conviction, it's even more concerning.
You also mentioned there were 163 teacher cases that went from CPS to charter schools. Can you just, you know, go over the details, how that happened, and...
I know, I know the details that we, that we read in the newspaper. So the Tribune did an article, I don't remember how long ago it was anymore, within the last eight months, because I was at the state board, about 163 teachers who were on the do not hire list, that then were able to find employment at charter schools. And, you know, some of, some of the information that we've received, and I don't know if it's teachers or just employees, it may be teachers and paraprofessionals, but some of the information that we've received was that these are not offenses, they're on their do not hire list, but they're not offenses that would rise to the level of teacher misconduct or anything along those lines. But we have asked CPS for several months for that information, we've issued a subpoena for the information, and we're still waiting for all of the information to come forward.
And then lastly, and this just came up as well, sometimes we pass legislation that, you know, some of my colleagues think it's a good idea with unintended consequences. So since we're here talking about how to handle the abuses that we're seeing at CPS and other schools, and figure out what process works, there was a bill that was passed in the Senate and the House's past session, I believe, that changes the licensure requirements for teachers to allow individuals with certain indecent exposure convictions to obtain a teacher license. When we pass legislation such as that, does it concern you, when we're dealing with background checks and, you know, the teachers that are teaching in the classroom?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not aware of the specific language of the legislation, so it's hard for me to, to say specifically. But certainly, when there's legislation that comes across my desk that I see unintended consequences for, and that raises an eyebrow, and I would raise it with Amanda or Sarah or the superintendent, so...
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, I'm sorry, I was kind of like daydreaming a little bit. Did I hear you say that you had to issue a subpoena to CPS, or you had to issue a subpoena to get information from CPS?
Yes, sir. With respect to the 163 employees that were on the do not hire list that then were hired by charter schools, we have issued a subpoena for that information.
And why wouldn't they just give you that information? Aren't you entitled to it?
I don't know the answer to that.
And you serve as the quasi-ROE also, right?
Yes.
And they refused to give you the information, on what grounds?
I don't believe they necessarily gave us grounds. I don't know that they've given us grounds, I would have to go back and check our responses from CPS. But when we didn't get the information that we asked for, we issued a subpoena.
Oh, so the Tribune shouldn't feel too bad, they're not the only ones that can't get information, you can't either, right?
Like I said before, we get information sometimes, so...
It is, do you have the same experience with the other 851 school districts?
When, when we issue a subpoena, we typically get information from any of them.
Well, I mean, in general, that's when you ask the 851 school districts for information. Generally speaking, are they pretty forthcoming with the information?
I'm going to give you a really good lawyer answer and say it depends. It really depends, it depends on what school district we're talking about. The Southern Illinois School District that I mentioned that, that fired a teacher for sexual abuse last week, already sent us the information about the teacher, certified male, this week, so we didn't even have to ask for it. So some of them are very proactive, some of them are not nearly as proactive, and we have to dig more. But I can't quantify how many of them are responsive and how many of them are not.
So CPS does not give you any grounds, whether it's just based on principle, or whether they're afraid you're going to find something they don't want you to find?
I don't recall that they gave us any grounds, but I can go back and check that information and let you guys know. Amanda's writing a note for me right now.
Yeah, well, again, there's a pattern, there's a trend, and I mentioned this before, that they always push back.
Certainly.
CPS in Chicago as well, when you ask for information, and that's, especially a lot of the fact of what we're reading right now in the press, you would think that they would be a little bit more open to ISB. And you guys are the most probably pretty nice, you try to help out, I don't think you've been that adversarial with CPS.
We, it is our, we see it as our purpose to provide support and technical assistance to ensure that schools have what they need to provide healthy, safe, strong environments for their, for their kids. We want to be supportive, we don't want to be mean.
Yeah.
But we can be, if we need to be. That's something that we can be, and certainly, we would rather work with a school district to improve their systems than work against a school district in any way.
And that's why we wanted CPS to be last today, so we can follow up on these kind of questions. You might have talked about this, so how do you treat private or parochial schools when it comes to allegations of sexual abuse?
So private and parochial schools are a whole different animal. Jeff actually oversees them, so I'll let him correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't, if an educator in a private or parochial school holds an Illinois license, then certainly if we have sex abuse allegations against a license holder, we treat them like a public school teacher. But in terms of dealing with the private and parochial schools, they don't, they're not actually under our direct purview. We do have a recognition standard, and they can lose their recognition, but that doesn't prevent them from being part of a, being part of a private or parochial system. And I'll, at that, turn it over to Jeff to talk about that.
You might have teachers in a parochial or private school that are not, that don't have a license?
Correct.
So those, those that have a license do come before your purview, because you do have a hammer.
Yes.
Those that teach in parochial or private schools that don't have a license, if there's allegations of sexual abuse, there's nothing you can do.
Well, we have, we have no action to take against an individual educator who has no license. I will say, however, that as a precondition to being recognized as a non-public school through the State Board of Ed, that the same background check requirements apply to private and parochial school teachers, regardless of whether or not they're licensed. That's on the front end, of course.
Yeah, but it is, it is purely voluntary for a private and parochial school to be recognized by the State Board of Education. It's a purely voluntary process, it's something that they have to choose to do. So, so if they have chosen not to be recognized, and there are several that have chosen not to be recognized, then we really have no purview whatsoever.
What percent of teachers in private schools have a license, do we know?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if we have a data collection for that, but if we do, we'll absolutely provide it to you.
Or parochial schools will be interesting, I mean, it's just...
Yeah, I don't know if we collect, I don't know if we collect that information at all, but...
But they also fall under the mandated report?
Yes, they do.
Thank you so much for your time and for your patience.
Thank you.